Took them to the road, sorry. Took them to the driveway, whatever I took them.
Oh, okay.
We can't blame them.
I was just making sure.
You've got to be kidding me.
Camera next to the fire. Couldn't get the narrow angle.
It's posted to the wrong page. Oh, no, there goes. Was it poison on my page? I was practicing on my personal page because I can private.
Oh, okay.
I was practicing because I can't private it on the city page.
Oh, okay.
So it's a private it on my page. Okay, fixed it.
We'll have to get to about three more monitors here soon.
I just switched from my case to like just a stand because.
What is this?
Isn't that cool? It's a charging thing. Because I have so many plugs, I would have to unplug yours and then yours would die.
I don't know if they ever use that. I can't get this. It's like when I'm trying to get it turned on and oh.
Just top the, I have, everybody should be set up so I can. Yeah, all should be all good. But usually yours is dead because I have to unplug.
Ah, that's what it is.
That's why, because I need all six plugs for all my tech.
So when the diaphragm burns down.
Yes, that's her. Yeah.
So yeah, so if y'all ever have to plug in, I got.
We got water, right? We can put water on that.
Yeah, we can just. All I got is coke. I know there's an extra one here. I don't know if that's okay or not.
It would not be good on the line. Be a show for a little bit.
Yeah. It could be a lot of fun.
Okay, let's call this the Ridgewood City Council meeting to order. It's, uh, six P M. Central daylight time. Trish, would you lead us in the invocation, please, ma'am?
Let us pray. Dear wonderful Father in heaven, please hear our prayers. We thank you for bringing us together tonight and we ask for your protection as we return to our homes after the meeting ends. May we have wisdom to do our best for the city. May we have patience to keep up our work even when things go awry. May we have compassion when we consider the needs of our community and citizens. We thank you for all you have given us for this wonderful community and the people who work so hard and selflessly for its benefit. In your son's most holy name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please believe.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, uh, let the record reflect or show that, uh, all council members are present tonight. Uh, again, I said council meeting, but this is the Ridgewood Board of Adjustments meeting that has started at six P M., so I want to correct that. Uh. Okay, and that's on, uh, that's on the, uh, the next one. Oh, it is. All right. Uh, do we have any? It looks like we don't have any public comments for the board of adjustments. So we'll move right on to item six, which is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the meeting held March eighth, twenty twenty-one. Any questions? Discussion?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilmember Matthew Yarborough. Uh, to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Mark Brown. Uh, Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strawn, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthew Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that the consent agenda was approved. Item seven, discussion in action items, public hearing in action to consider variance to allow a storage shed to be built within the R one residential district setbacks at two forty-four Briar Creek. Uh, that would be Mr. Yearson. Do you have any? Do y'all have any discussion or would you?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh. All that information was in our packets. Uh, so is there any discussion by the council members? Or questions?
I just had a question just for clarification. This is, the slabs already poured, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because I saw the application says to pour a slab, but then there's one that says you would either have to move it or break it up. So just trying to.
No, it's already poured, yes, sir.
Okay. Ten-four.
Any other questions or discussion?
We usually get letters from neighbors. Have we gotten any letters back from neighbors on this one?
No, they were sent out, but no responses.
How long has that?
They were sent out on, I think, early April twenty-second.
It wouldn't encroach on any, like, neighbors' issues, right? I mean, that's only, I just wanted to make an informed decision based on the neighbors that it would directly impact. Since we haven't had that.
He has no issue with it.
Okay.
And the backyard property is up against commercial property, right?
Yes, sir, those are actually a privacy fence that they put up.
I'd like to make a motion to allow variance to allow a storage shed to be built within the R one residential district setbacks at two four-four Briar Creek. Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilmember Mike Johnson, a second by Councilmember Mark Brown. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strawn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect or show that the, uh, that is approved. The adjustment was approved. All righty. Okay, so that brings us to adjourning this section of the meeting, or this particular board of adjustment meeting, and we will resume with a planning and zoning commission at six fifteen. So we are adjourned at six oh six P M. Central daylight time.
Well, I'm surprised not to get any neighbor letters. Usually you get one or two.
I hadn't got anything. I, I got a call that she didn't identify herself and just said she's fine. I tried to get information, she just said I'm a neighbor, but.
Okay.
No one.
Nothing, no?
Mm-mm.
No?
No, huh?
Yeah.
Get back if there's a thing.
Yeah, generally it's, I don't hear.
Or there's a bunch of people supporting it, like, like what happened with the aunt, like the RV, that the guy that you have a problem with it, you know, being too close or.
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
Almost.
Is that what it works? I can't remember what the last name is.
I can't pronounce it.
Yeah.
But yeah, they're my neighbors.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, well, it's like that, you know, you get lots of positives too. It's not just that I get it, but.
I think.
I think.
People to do it.
Yes, sometimes they'll say, can you let us in?
Can you please let, yeah.
I agree.
Well, and it does help a little to at least get the neighbor who is going to be closest to you, say, like, it's fine.
The funny thing is, like, the way those streets are, it's like a main street and no street, and so two hundred feet gets a lot of people. Some people are like, why am I getting their letters? This, so that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just never know.
Go write me back about chickens.
Yeah, yeah.
I do get letters about chickens. Some letters.
Yeah, they're good. Yeah, no camping, thank God. Something awesome that we've done.
The chicken ones, little chickens.
Disgusting. I was a brother last year, they came all positive. Oh, look, good.
Okay.
California.
Yeah, everybody's, I think that they go in like a promise, I'll give you all the eggs.
Right? It's like, be nice to me, I'll be nice to you.
If it's just a couple, if it's manageable, you keep.
Well, four is, six is the one. Six is the limit? Two or six.
That's without.
Yes, without, yeah.
I think we did a variance.
So the way the ordinance is written is I get the permit and then I send the letters on. If you get any no, the neighbor is no. So if it's, and then you can come in.
Because the last one we did was in Angleton, almost.
Ten forty.
Ten?
Yes, and his was right before we did the animal.
Have a little talk with him about.
So they do want one.
How we might be able to talk to some, you know.
Shore up some power issues.
Yeah.
One that wanted chickens and.
And see how that, uh. Since they have all this electron, or all this digital stuff now, there should be, I know, I know what the problem, problem is. It's just gonna be a time.
You probably got enough room if you put it right.
Yes.
Not right up against a neighbor, it won't be a problem.
Well, unless it's a. The way I understand it.
Touching properties of.
Unless it's a complete grid.
Those are the radius of neighbors we call them.
Shutdown.
Really, all they have to do is they put in the specific address, not like physical address, but numerical address of that box.
Any, we're writing.
And it's on an example, it's like, uh, first aid clinic hospital. Uh, certain schools until they're allowed to shut down properly. Uh, airports.
All those, they, they just give, there's a number on the box and they just, and it exempts them.
Well, and that's the, that's the thing.
They're just growing so fast.
And that, that's, that's probably, it's one of the things that's probably similar, since they're having to do.
It's like two years ago.
Yeah.
What they need to do is just like, just like we did it, you know, in our processes. You got this process, this emergency process, and did this button.
Those mosquitoes, was it mosquitoes?
Everything happens, you know, and they can calculate the number of. You know, they should be able to calculate the amount of.
You went into the honorary station.
Kilowatts or whatever they're saying.
We, we ate out Friday.
Yeah, where we don't go.
By the time we were done with dinner, they were all open. It was so not, like, a temperature line, it was pretty high.
Okay. Plant property is here.
There was a bench yesterday, even when the sun started going down. We turned the fans on outside the can.
A part of the property without shutting down.
Yeah, I think they need to spray.
Yeah, we set up for Clint's, uh. The birthday, true, the birthday party on Saturday.
They were able to, and it wasn't a complete shutdown, despite what they said, because the city had power.
Right.
And then they would shut that off, and the other half of the city was live power.
And that's what it is.
Just go.
The entire thing, you know.
Yes.
I don't know why.
For lack of a better term.
I never realized.
That part was back there.
That playground part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Supposedly.
Well, I guess I knew about the fishing tour.
There was something to do.
I don't remember, like, the walking back.
The reason only had to sit down, there was something going on with the.
It's nice.
With a, um, main line or something.
I didn't realize it was a straight.
It got knocked down or.
You could just walk.
Transformer or something, but. That's, that was initially what they said was the problem.
Mm-hmm, right next to it.
If that was exactly what it was, but any, any rate. After fifty, some odd hours, they should, you know, they said they were gonna have it fixed by the next morning. Well, it wasn't fixed. So, you know.
Yeah, he was back with his little fishing pole.
Our system had planned.
I know for the party they were.
We actually had two hangups.
He said sometimes, I guess.
We could come in off a free port.
Salt really moves in, they'll catch a few reds.
Come in off the end.
Yeah, they can catch some big things.
And if we lost one, we had a automatic switch. Mm-hmm. And so, uh.
We have the patience.
We, since that wasn't quite as.
Just let it be.
Uh, they still had a lot of manual switches and everything, but.
I can see the duck mind and not see a bird all day.
Not quite as computerized, but yeah, when, when one plant would go down.
Fish would run my hand though, about ten minutes, and I'm like, God, I need.
Kill that plant for power outage and everything else, right? And so, you know, we, we had that set.
Tyler will walk though back there.
For years. As a good plan.
We'll definitely see how.
Getting away from all the girls in the house problems.
That's a, it just, you know.
Not such a bad thing.
Just make sure your stand doesn't fall over.
If, if you can do, if you could do something like that digitally.
You can go and shake the legs from now on.
Or a chemical operation, you should be able to do it.
Why you?
And if you could turn off one, one address, you should be able to set up a protocol to turn on. Whatever you need for, for this.
I was home.
Okay, God, that's one minute.
I remember you were going Louisiana, is that where your place is? Okay.
Do not let me forget, I'm with these glasses on.
Stand fell over.
I'll catch you. I'll block.
I'm stupid.
I can't reschedule another.
Yeah, I'm doing better.
Yeah, you don't need to get the other one.
They cut it open pretty good then, huh?
Yeah.
Jeez.
Yeah, went all the way up into, into there. This is still swelling. Got a little roller thing to roll it down. And then when I go in for physical therapy, she'll. Break up. Yeah, she'll, she'll massage you. I'm starting to get feeling back in different places than I haven't had.
This is, the, that rises to twenty.
That is as long as.
Did you scream?
Long as it's in.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of like five, five, waiting to go home.
Before fifty-nine, it takes forever. Mm-hmm. It's almost there.
And it didn't, it, that was like a couple of days later and then all that blood fell down. Even the palm of my hand is blue from that.
Can you imagine?
How high is? Primers? You good, ma'am? Are you coming back?
Twenty-two thousand, it was like a twenty-two thousand, I was, I was ready.
Ten to twelve feet. Is it just windy?
I just.
Oh, it was raining.
I just.
Okay, it's, uh, six fifteen Central daylight time. Let's go ahead and call to order the Ridgewood Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh. We've already had the roll call council members. Do we have any, no public comments?
I don't know that Mr. Shays is here.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda for the meeting, we've already approved that one too.
Different.
Oh, different one, okay. Uh, consent agenda, approval of those minutes from March eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on March eighth, twenty twenty-one. Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilmember Mike Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Matt Yarborough. Uh, Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strawn, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record show that unanimously, the meetings, or the minutes were unanimously approved. Uh, discussion in action items, preliminary review and action of replat of lots seventy-four and seventy-five, block one of Oakwood Shore subdivision, section one, also known as thirty-four, thirty-two, four twenty-six and thirty-two, four thirty-four, by U. Ben. Uh, do we have any discussion or questions?
Uh. I don't think they're here, but everything's been approved by a planner view, HOA. They've paid fees, taxes are current.
Okay.
The city's good to go.
Okay. Does council have any discussion or questions?
I make a motion to approve the replat of lots seventy-four and seventy-five, block one of Oakwood Shore subdivision, section one, also known as three, two, four, two, six, and three, two, four, three, four, by U. Ben.
Okay, and we have a motion made by Councilmember Matt Yarborough, seconded by Councilmember Mark Brown. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strawn, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that the motion has been, the motion carries and the, uh, replat has been approved.
No. It was too fast for me.
Okay.
It was two minutes meeting.
So.
I'm giving you all five minutes next time.
We will adjourn.
Now we just did the nine minutes.
We will adjourn this session of the, uh, planning and zoning commission and we will come back at six thirty P M. for regular council meeting, or we will, uh, yes, come back at, uh, call to order at six thirty P M. It is six nineteen.
So the surveyor on this plot only put for the chairman and the mayor's signature spots, so I'm gonna have mayor sign it and see if they'll record it. If the county won't take it, he's gonna have to bring me a new one and then I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
We still have to do it during council too, the, um, official.
Yes.
I mean.
Yeah, there'll be a final approval too.
Are you approve one and not approve the other? Seeing stranger things?
Well, you did see on, uh, what was that magnolia where they changed, they did not change the plaque, remember? We approved it and then they brought it back to us and it changed, so. Probably just check it. Those A Ds are pricey. You've seen them, like, I'm gonna purchase some for, like, this one here. You know, or some nice. I don't think that, or. Yeah. And we got six, seven hundred cars. Three here and there.
Yes, please. Gotcha.
Yes, ma'am, please. There's no telling. I can't count past one anyway.
Sure, thank you.
All the way, uh, livestream, I don't know if you guys are seeing, it was beautiful, it was awesome. Heard that was a massage.
The, the good thing is, is the service contract covered. So it passes, new passes, cases, sometimes they break because the way the ride around the police department, it's like a hundred percent reaffirmed and certified. So, I mean, you know.
There's gotta be a market.
Yeah, understanding the good Samaritan law coverage, but you're like, you know, just the face down, sort of like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'm like.
So you're doing your due diligence and you just gotta find business standpoint, there's obviously a, a, a market for this and.
And the good, the good thing is, is the, uh, we've only got two brands. The company that's here is actually the manufacturer, so it's like. Show some battery in there, but.
Yeah.
So it's a three-year.
A three-year?
Three-year deal, so it's.
So I think from a budgetary standpoint, budgetary standpoint, every three years, we should factor in thirteen grand.
Yep.
And there seems to be a lot of new, as stuff has happened, as these, once in a lifetime events are happening, we're realizing a lot of missing deficiencies. But maybe we should, all right, every three years, thirteen grand, or you can annualize it. Yep. Every year, but like degemmering, make mistakes.
Yeah.
And we've gone.
Uh, we're slowly, you know, uncovering a lot of those that were, you know, hidden or, or lost. We're getting those put in, you know, budgeted line items that way, it's not a shock.
I'm excited to see the, uh, allocation, how we can start fixing infrastructure.
Yes.
That's gonna be, with the American relief.
And we're still waiting.
Have they cut the trucks yet or not yet? No.
Well, there's a lot of bluster, bluster.
It would be there next week. Yeah. We should have bought lumber.
Yeah, I saw that on TikTok the other night.
Yeah.
And he goes, my neighbors are rich. She starts panicking, spitting, saying this giant house and it's just a pile of lumber.
Oh, really? Who they are. Ran over a sheet of plywood yesterday, driving back from Houston. And I was like, oh, stop. Ran over like a hundred dollar bill or something. And I was like, okay, that shit. Yeah, yeah.
It's trying to.
Yeah.
Pick up everybody's.
Yeah.
Let me see if I have the setting I did. It might be a setting I did.
I worked the next.
I was just in caption.
Yes, it is.
Hey, it's wrong too, isn't it?
It's bad.
Yeah.
Are you looking at the post captioning? Let me take the fact that we know.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Well, that's because of my broke arm.
That can't be a rumor.
I can show you the scar.
I've got, I have three stands right now, but I'm.
Yeah.
Kinda, I was gonna do some patching on this summer, I'm like.
Yeah.
I'll make another.
I'm heading down to South Texas, gosh, I got like a couple hundred shirts like every weekend. Look for customers and.
Nice.
Taking a bunch of young operations managers down there, but our Nogai are sick of competing with the furries. And right now we can't shoot any Nogai cows from May to August. And we've got huge mature bulls.
Yeah.
We found ten of them upon the rose, so no one knows.
That's their, yeah.
So now there's a lot of European mouths.
Ew!
But, you know, they were old, their faces are.
Fair, I turned it off.
Okay.
Getting up very well.
Those guys are eating that stuff.
It's good.
Oh, Nogai?
A lot of people just want their picture, that's over.
I'm like, that's some, that's some good eater. My wife won't eat any, she won't buy beef anymore, she's like, I want Nogai. I don't want buffalo, I want Nogai. She's okay, that's what I have. I've only ever shot cows, Nogai cows, who knows? Like customers shoot the bulls for them.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'll shoot a cow, that's all.
Yeah.
Better than me.
Yeah.
Always try to do a good, good shot, so.
More to bring home.
It's right at the beginning of.
So this is, from my standpoint, it is pretty.
It's actually that.
Was it a live and.
Something in the.
It's on video, it's on posted video.
Uh-oh.
Because it looks like it's dark, but my desk. Why are you using a thermal? Should you step with it? Handshot it. Yeah, that was, yeah, that one, I was like. I know the, the lane for the manager, right down the road, I see.
I'm used to, I always call somebody.
Back to the hall, it's crazy.
And then we're doing, it's just the main side.
You can.
And it's like, they'll pick up all the stuff, they're way to throw it up. So, you know, Saturday morning, we have to tie it all.
So he told me, he was like. And it's awesome. I know Shrek had this real sergeant here. He's, 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 he's small, but he's gonna be, just so he can get, you know, some waters with, he's close, but.
She's like that's somebody ran and got her all over the state. I thought it was a tree.
I was like just take the tag.
I need some food. Stop talking about this now. I already called somebody to pick it up. Twenty minutes later I tell them.
It's gotta be cause it gets. For lack of a better term it just is. Chicken nuggets to make.
Rory was a good dude but he put alligator right.
I've got some buddies that go every year. That person run it over ten foot three hundred pounds. Yeah, I think that was on the Fred Hartman or somewhere.
Somewhere.
It was on that.
Yeah, yeah.
The caption should be gone now. Where the captions gone now? I pulled it up on my phone, it should be gone. It's probably trying to keep up with all the.
Yeah, with discretion.
So when he installed it, he wired it to each of these.
I don't feel like a man I thought you were.
Everything.
Uh huh, well. They're all just. Come pick it up. The by drive by.
But instead of it all trying to pick up on that camera, he wired it to where it's gonna pick up on each one of our recordings.
Yeah, picking up everybody's.
Everybody's doing, yeah. And it's trying to decipher what's priority, I guess.
It was really bad just that whole year.
Be careful. Right before you hit Stratridge Road there's just.
Next season. That made me feel good, I'm like that's me.
Worked a lot of way too.
Ableton.
Got a call.
So I just came straight down, I think I'm gonna get she wants to get back up. I didn't realize it was the first thing I heard.
We gotta vote to pass it through. Okay, let's go ahead and call the regular council meeting to order at six thirty PM. Just one thing I forgot to tell y'all, we are live on Facebook tonight and the mics are live so everything that we're seeing and you know it's trying to pick up everybody's conversations so we are actually uptown now. We've already called roll call.
Let me go pull this sheet real quick cause.
Alright. Thanks Brittany. Okay, as there are no public comments, we will go ahead and move on into canvas the results of the May first twenty twenty one election. We'll swear in. And Steve Boykin, Mayor Melissa Strong, position two. Matthew Yarborough, position three.
I just need a motion to approve ordinance four seventy seven canvassing the May first twenty twenty one general election.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the canvas ordinance four seventy seven for the election May first twenty twenty one.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Mike Johnson. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a second by made by Rory Escalante. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that the motion was carried and congratulations to all the council members who are returning.
Do you want to come to you?
Uh, you could, well, I won't fall down and break my arm again. Between mask and glasses.
Okay. So raise your right hand and be after me. I, Steve Boykin.
I, Steve Boykin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the city of Richwood.
Of the city of Richwood.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Richwood City Charter.
The Richwood City Charter.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Okay. Did you sign that for me?
Yeah.
Melissa. Stand up. It doesn't matter. Are you going down?
Yeah, I'm gonna go down.
So raise your right hand and be after me. I, Melissa Strong.
I, Melissa Strong.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city council, position two.
Of the office of city council, position two.
Of the city of Richwood.
Of the city of Richwood.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Richwood City Charter.
The Richwood City Charter.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Okay. Raise your right hand and be after me. I, Matthew Yarborough.
I, Matthew Yarborough.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city council, position three.
Of the office of city council, position three.
Of the city of Richwood.
Of the city of Richwood.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Richwood City Charter.
The Richwood City Charter.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to item five. Consent agenda, approval minutes, regular meeting held April twelfth, budget report March twenty twenty one, investment report Q two fiscal year twenty twenty one. Any discussion? Questions?
Is this the budget report or is this later?
No, that's later.
Okay.
He's talking about the handout you passed out. That's the presentation.
Okay. Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Mark Brown. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second made by Councilmember Matthew Yarborough. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that the motion is carried. Okay, item six, presentation, financial financing plan and schedule of events for presentation, general obligation fund series twenty twenty one. Chris.
Mr. Council and. Mr. Councilmembers of this may introduce John Robert from Black Financial.
Great introduction.
Mr. Council and.
And Councilman Mayor.
Mayor, councilmembers, John Robert B. O. P. Financial Securities, great to be here tonight. Tonight I was gonna present to you a financing plan and a scheduled events presentation for the second part of the November twenty eighteen bond elections approved by voters in November twenty eighteen. Before you share the presentation that looks like this, I'll be discussing this and going through this. Turn to page one. I like to always start off by going over the bond market, kind of give an overview of what's going on in the bond market, see what our interest rates are and how we potentially sell these bonds in the market if we're to sell today. This is the bond buyer index, you need a copy?
Yes, sir, sorry about that.
So sorry.
I'm sorry.
If they're not, it's alright.
The bond buyer index is a weekly average municipal bond market across the country of double A rated paper. The blue line on this chart is a general obligation debt index and this is what will be issued with the general obligation bonds. So if you look there on the far right, the current rate is a two point two six. To put that in context, the all time low is a two point zero two, so we're only twenty four basis points or point two four percentage points below or above the all time low and about two percent off of the historical average. So we're in a great place to sell bonds and lock at historically low interest rates. On page two of the presentation, wanted to give you kind of a look at what we promised voters in twenty eighteen and kind of how the tax rate has shaped up since then and what we're projecting it to look like going forward with the issuance of this debt obligation. The blue lines or blue bar chart there is the actual projections we made to voters when we had the bond election pass in twenty eighteen and we had a maximum tax rate and this is the interest and sinking funds, the debt service portion of the tax rate. There's also an operation side which is a different component, but this is the debt service side. We projected to be seventeen point five cents. Currently, we're projecting the maximum after the second sale to be thirteen point two five cents or about four point two five cents less than we told voters. So we came in well below what we promised and very proud of that. I think y'all should be too, take credit for that because y'all did a great job managing the funds. On the next page is the estimated debt service requirements of issuing the twenty twenty one general obligation bonds. You have two million forty five thousand of authorization left. We ran the blue columns there, the principal interest, as if it's a real market sale today. So we have premium, investors are looking to buy these bonds at premium so we can generate funds and reduce the amount of bonds we have to issue. So to generate the two million forty five thousand proceeds, we only have to issue one million eight hundred sixty five thousand bonds. Now that will fluctuate as we get to pricing, but we believe we'll issue less than the proceeds amount. But the current debt service requirements there on the left, principal interest, and that includes all of your debt, even your water and sewer and your geo debt. Then the blue is the proposed new debt and then the orange there or peach, I guess, is the debt service that's paid by the water and sewer, so we removed that because it's considered self supporting. And then on the far right, your total tax supported debt service requirements after the sale of the bonds. So about four hundred and seventy five, four hundred and eighty thousand a year, dropping down to four twenty five and then drops even further from there. Next page is the tax rate impact and again it takes into consideration the debt service that I just talked about and also the taxable assessed valuation of the city. Last year your value grew about sixteen percent. We are conservatively estimated to be about four and a half percent next year, which is how we calculate there in the yellow column, if you can see that there in the middle, the maximum tax rate at thirteen point two five cents to generate a debt service fund balance of about fifteen percent of next year's debt service requirements there on the far right. There are a lot of numbers on this page and if you have questions, please let me know, but this is how we calculate what we think the tax rate will be going forward based on your values, the interest rate projected on the bonds and also interest earnings on your fund balance. And then to accomplish this on the last page of the presentation is the tentative scheduled events. We are in the process of drafting an offering document that will provide to investors, you want to buy your bonds, that contain information about the city, the finances and the structure of the bonds. We referred that we had that about a week ago, so we'll continue working on that. Tonight, we're here to just get your nod of approval to move forward and if you need to give us your nod, we'll start working even harder on the document, get it finalized, send to the rating companies, have a rating call and then come back to you on June fourteenth with the sale results. We'll sell the bonds that morning and ask you for your approval that evening at the meeting, then about a month later, close, deliver the bonds and then provide the proceeds for the city to draw on the project. With that, I'll be happy to answer your questions you have. I kind of went through that pretty fast and I know there's a lot of numbers in the slides, but the gist of all this is y'all are in a great place and well below what you told taxpayers and we're in a great place in the trade environment to sell bonds.
Good.
Yes, sir.
It's the kind of news we like to hear.
Does this require a motion?
No, sir.
It will in June.
Just a nod?
Just a nod.
Do you foresee any like market volatility from here until June fourteenth? I mean, there's a lot of variables that are going on right now. I mean, I'm not asking you to predict the future, but you know.
Can you look in your globe?
There's always volatility. The bond market works just like the stock market. Not as wild swings, but we have had.
Right now, it's pretty wild.
Fifty basis point swings. I don't foresee anything. The short term rates are gonna stay low. They're projecting another like four quarters of the trade environment, so I don't see anything out there, but again.
Can't do anything about it.
There's a lot of things that could happen.
Yeah, well, I mean, I like the June timeframe because the second quarter economic reports that come out would be later, so if we can capture it before then, that's.
Exactly. And right now, just there's not a lot of bond volume out there in the market. The volume's been off prior years. We're gonna see a pickup in probably July, August, September time frames, late summer, you know, early fall and so this is a big great time to sell bonds because there's a lot of interested buyers that are buying bonds with a high rated and y'all are double A minus, which is good right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We'll see you in about a month then, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and action items. Item seven, number eight, discuss requests from Creek Bend Homeowners Association for children at play signage within the neighborhood.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Brittany Figaro. I'm here for the Creek Bend subdivision. I am a member of the HOA. We have had several residents over probably the last six months to a year ask for signs to be posted that say children at play, any variants of the such. We don't allow our residents to park on the street long term, so we don't see a lot of like the cars slowing down traffic that you see on some other streets and we do have a large number of families with small children and essentially two cul-de-sacs. So at any given time, there's always children outside playing and it's been a big concern to our parents. And so tonight I just wanted to present you a couple sign options. We're open to anything that the city would prefer us to post and then also some options as to where they could be posted. Again, the HOA, we are completely open to whatever council would approve. We don't have anything in particular that we would like to see posted. These entrances are both the entrances on Moore Street to the Creek Bend subdivision and then the stop sign picture is the entrance to the actual neighborhood. To the left, you would have Burr Oak, to the right, you'd have Shadow Bend and then the last two pictures are Shadow Bend and South Yopon. And so those are also entrances to the neighborhood. We I tried to post signs that had like stop signs or a sign already posted because one thing that another board member had mentioned is it might be easier to post a sign under a stop sign if that was an option. The HOA is completely willing to post the signs ourselves or completely finance any signs that are posted if you would prefer the city post them. If the council does not feel that signs need to be posted, then we are all also okay with like having signs in the yard as you see other neighborhoods have.
Any questions? Discussion?
Chief, has the police department had a chance to look at this request at all or would they be interested, I guess, in providing locations?
You know what, we have not and I'm more than willing to work with Brittany to make sure that those locations are spot on or maybe it would have been a different place. Sure, absolutely.
I'd just take probably the best suitable from signage and where will be the most effective and stuff.
Today, this is just.
We didn't have any idea, so I just tried to put the entrances to the neighborhoods where we thought cars would be coming, you know, where they'd be coming in. The HOA is completely willing to post the signs ourselves or completely finance any signs that are posted if you would prefer the city post them. If the council does not feel that signs need to be posted, then we are all also okay with, like, having signs in the yard as you see other neighborhoods have.
Any questions? Discussion?
Chief, has the police department had a chance to look at this request at all, or would they be interested, I guess, in providing locations?
You know what? We have not, and I'm more than willing to work with Brittany to make sure that those locations are spot on, or maybe put them in a different place. Sure, absolutely.
I'd just take probably the best suitable form of signage and where will be the most effective and stuff.
Today, this is just.
We didn't have any idea, so I just tried to put the entrances to the neighborhoods where we thought cars would be coming, you know, where they'd be coming in that we're not familiar with the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
Today's just a discussion because Cliff and I were speaking, and this has to be enacted through ordinance to post signage on the right of ways. So we're really just looking for, is it something council will look to approve an ordinance? So that way Cliff and I can work and then get it to Matt to get an ordinance approved. We didn't want to draft it and do all the work if it wasn't something that looks feasible for the city.
And we are, again, 100%, like, we will pay for everything. Like, we, we don't expect the city to finance this in any facet. Like, we will take care of that.
Safety's number one.
Yeah, if y'all happen to identify any other areas in the city that could use somebody, maybe we can work together, buy them both, and get the whole city in high-occupancy areas.
And I would gladly work with any neighborhood or, you know, residents of a particular street and go in on it together. I would be happy to do that.
You see more and more of the little plastic turtle with the flag. A lot of those are popping up that people are putting at the end of their own driveways and stuff, but maybe something bigger that grabs for the whole neighborhood is better.
And we, we had mentioned that previously, and we had a resident say, well, those are really easy to, you know, someone to walk by and pop up and, you know, kids take off with them, or they're really easy to miss if you're in a larger vehicle, which is why they really wanted to see actual signs posted if that was a possibility.
Any other questions or discussion?
We can see, maybe the chief can help us in looking to get maybe other neighborhoods included in the ordinance if we need to, or we'll start working on it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss and consider approval of a resolution amending the FY21 budget service agreement for police and fire department AED machines.
Mayor and council, the city and the fire department has collectively 12 AED machines. Most of these are in need of service or will be shortly. The most cost-effective way to do this, instead of piecemealing paddles, batteries, and all this separately, is to put them under contract with the actual, actually the people who made them. So we're asking to amend the budgets, police and fire departments, $13,000 is the appropriate amount per agency for these 12 AED machines. And again, this is for a three-year contract, and it recertifies the machine, new batteries, new paddles, you know, the whole nine yards. So the, we really need to get this taken care of and get these back in action.
Is the 12 number for every vehicle that we have? Is that what that is? Is there one in every vehicle?
There are nine with the police department. I believe there are six in cars, three in buildings, and then the fire department has three, and I believe they just bought a new one, correct, Mark?
Correct.
Which is also already covered under that service contract. So this will cover every one we have for three years.
Okay, and that's as many as we need, or?
For now.
What brand are?
Mark.
Striker?
He's our resident AED guy.
That's good.
So is it $13,000 a year or just $13,000 for?
For the, for the three years.
For the three years.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to pay it all this year?
Yes, sir.
I can tell you from having to keep up with ours out of the plant, there's a lot to keep up with because the paddles expire, the batteries expire, they need to be checked regularly, and just make, you know, to make sure that they are functional. And so it's a, that really is not that big of a cost.
Sure.
Was it exactly 13,000 or just a little more?
And these are all new machines?
No, these are, these are re-certifying the ones we have.
Okay.
They bought one new one.
And that 13,000 would replace if they go bad?
Yes.
Okay.
100% certified.
Okay.
And I believe it's new batteries no matter what, that you get the batteries. Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I would, I would like, I own Swedlock down the road, and I'll split that with you guys if you guys want to do that.
Very gracious.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's a process for that, but if that helps make the decision, I'll split that. If it's for the fire, for the fire department and police department?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll get these two talking weekend.
Yeah, just let me know.
Appreciate it, Chuck.
And I think it's great to put it under a contract. That way, it protects the city if there ever was an event. We have a certified machine that's been monitored and kept up to date, and it just, it's just securing our potential lawsuits.
I'd like to make a motion to amend fiscal year budget, 21 budget and service agreement for police and fire department AED machines not to exceed $13,392.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Motion made by Mike Johnson, second by Rory Escalante. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that the motion carries.
And thank you, Mr. Murray.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item C, discuss and consider a resolution amending the FY21 budget to increase pay for city staff.
Mayor, council, we brought this up in the last council meeting and actually prior to that even. Before you today is the budget minimum, an increase in pay for city staff, request to raise, city staff pay 1.5% COLA and up to a 2% based on employee performance evaluations and merit. Council was advised during the budgeting process that we would possibly be bringing this back to you if economic conditions were favorable. Due to COVID and the unknown surrounding financial impacts of the pandemic, these were delayed, especially we wanted to wait until Q2 and see what we were looking like. We could better track the anticipated recovery. At this time, social security is looking like they're 1.3% based off CPI increases. We feel that it's a reasonable request. Last cost of living raise was given here in October of 2019. At that time, it was 1.5 COLA and 1.5 merit, and we're asking for basically the same thing, just a different split now, up to 3% total, 1.5 COLA, 2% merit. And the financial impact for this benefits retirement, Medicare, everything, full Bennies is 19,146.85. The budget amendment does include my last evaluation on there as well, so that is included in that package. Because of the budget amendment, we're going to put it all together.
Okay, any discussion?
I think the staff has done a great job, and we really appreciate the hard work that y'all put in for the city. And given that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the COLA at 1.5% and the merit up to 2% based on employee performance evaluation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilmember Mark Brown, seconded by Councilmember Mike Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank, yes, definitely thank our city employees and staff for the fine work that they do every day for us. Okay, D, discuss and consider appointing mayor pro temp and committee liaison positions. I have some, well, we, due to, based on rotation, that the mayor pro temp should be Councilmember Yarborough. I just kind of threw some names in on these things. For the CCPD or Crime Prevention, Crime Control and Prevention District, Mike Johnson, if you'd like to work with that one. Keith Ridgewood, beautiful, Mark Brown, if you'd like to work with that, and the fire department, Rory Escalante. Now, y'all would like to have another, you know, if you have another one that you would like to work with, it's no problem.
I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
I'm good with it.
Okay. So.
I make a motion to appoint Matthew Yarborough as mayor pro temp, Mike Johnson as Crime Control and Prevention District, Mark Brown as Keith Ridgewood, beautiful, and Rory Escalante, is that right?
Yep.
As fire department liaisons.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Mike Brown.
I'll second.
Have a second by Councilmember Melissa Strong. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that the motion carries unanimously.
You just get a zero absence rule, that's all, mayor.
So that he doesn't have to step in. It was a joke.
Oh, good.
Right over.
You never can tell I might fall and break my arm again.
Don't joke about that.
Discuss and consider awarding RJ&amp;M construction with bid contract for the Van, or Magnolia Sewer Line Repair Project. Clifton Custer, sir.
I just have to get this, you know, packet to just want a copy of the letter, the official opinion of strain associates regarding RJ&amp;M. They were the apparent low bidder, place number two at 95,870 and number three at 98,000. All records have been checked and everything checks out. It seems to be a good way to go, and well under the cost opinions, the original cost opinions of strength.
Have we ever worked with RJ&amp;M before?
Never have.
Never?
And neither has Strain, but they did, they did get favorable responses.
Where are they out of?
I'm not. Channelview. Channelview? That's their address, yes.
Where do we get the favorable responses? From Texas Municipal or have they done other municipal work for other?
From other, yeah. Just from all their other municipalities.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because whenever I was looking them up, they weren't, I guess, really recognized, you know, like a Better Business Bureau or Google reviews or, you know, any of those things, if you try to look at this company up, and I guess, are we sure if they're worth?
It will, yeah. I mean, all we have to go on is what we get back from reps that we don't work with somebody, but unfortunately, the, the contractor we're all familiar with are 120,000 plus.
Well, they've come from Channelview, are they going to charge us any type of per diem or daily travel pay or something like that, or is that all included?
Should all be a turnkey situation, all inclusive in the price to get the project done start to finish.
You got to watch out for those per diems, though, because they, speaking from experience.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd verify it.
I'll, I'll do that, Mike, but that's definitely why I put Strain in charge of this stuff.
Correct price.
And let them take care of that.
That's definitely the right price if it's 30,000 difference between what we typically use and them, which you pay for sometimes, too.
It's, um, not that it's an issue now, there, there could be a de-watering situation come up. There's quick sand down there, you get about 12 feet, a lot of groundwater. But that line has been replaced from Magnolia to the lift station, and a stabilized base has been added. So we are anticipating, did not put de-watering in the bid, anticipating we'll not have to do it. But still, at that price, I don't see us exceeding the cost opinions of strength and what the original budget members was.
Any other questions or?
No, no, good. I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to award RJ&amp;M Construction the Magnolia Sewer Line Repair Project not to exceed $91,591.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Rory Escalante. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second made by Councilmember Melissa Strong. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Cliff.
Thanks, Cliff.
Okay, next, we will be going into executive session pursuant to chapter 551.075 Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee. Melissa Strong, City Council, position two. So we will adjourn at this point from open session.
One second, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Melissa, do you want this to be public or do you want executive session?
It's fine either way.
Well, you just.
I had, well, I had initially asked for it to be public, but I wasn't sure exactly what you're doing, and I didn't get a response back. Are we just discussing it, or are we, what are we doing?
Talking about executive session?
Yeah, we left on executive, so you had the option to go either way. Okay, I mean, you can make it executive.
Okay. All right, so we will, at 7:05 PM Central Daylight Time, we are adjourning the open meeting, and we will be moving into executive session for discussion.